I would like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Before we rise for the pledge. Susan has a question?
Not a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I don't want to be a harpy fish wife, but this is a public meeting. If the public can't hear you, there's no reason to have the meeting. So please use your microphone, speak into it. If you mute it, remember to unmute it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Can we please rise and pay our respects to the flag?
I would like to introduce the flag of the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we note the role?
Noted. Who isn't not here?
Mr. Turner is not here.
Mr. Turner is not here. And welcome back, Mr. Berger.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
We do introductions, are you good?
I've, I just learned who's here tonight and who's not.
Okay. Okay, number four, approval of tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve tonight's agenda dated August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second to approve tonight's agenda, any discussions? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, conflict of interest, ex parte contact. Does anybody have anything for tonight? Alright, seeing none. Number six, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, uh, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the regular, uh, Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes dated seven, eleven, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Number seven, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on things that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, I will move on to number eight, Commissioners' comments.
Just a quick note, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Very happy to be here this evening to see everybody's smiling faces.
Thank you, we, uh, we agree with that and glad to see you back. It has not been the same. Anybody else? Okay, number nine, public hearing. We have none for this evening. Number ten, unfinished business, master plan update.
Good evening Commissioners, Mateo Pasalacqua, Carlisle Wartman Associates, we're the planning consultant for the township. Uh, so as you are aware and as we discussed at our last meeting, August is future land use month. So we are looking to make some substantial progress on the draft map, uh, tonight being one of those step forwards. Um, as you, uh, may recall, in some of the conversations in prior, we were given direction from the board to meet with some of the substantial landowners within the community. Uh, one of those landowners being the Levy Corporation, which owns a substantial amount of property within the township. Uh, so tonight we've prepared materials for you, uh, that are basically the results of those meetings with them, kind of reviewing the sites that they own and operate. Uh, and what their long-term desires are for those properties. And as it kind of relates to the future land use, uh, the future land use, the draft, future land use map as part of the master plan process. So as it relates to those materials, what we'd kind of like to do tonight is go through those sites, uh, that were provided in the memo. Uh, and get feedback or direction from the board as it relates to those specific sites. And whether or not you, um, you're comfortable with the changes that they've proposed or the, the desires that they've placed on those sites as far as the future land use designations are concerned. You're not comfortable with those and would like them to go back to what's been originally designated in the current draft. Um, you would like to change them and how? Um, or you would essentially like to reserve certain areas for future conversations, given that some of the sites timelines for development aren't. They're five years out, ten years out, twenty years out, so on and so forth. And given the state requirement that you review your master plan every five years, some of those sites may be able to be dealt with, uh, at a later date and time and or process. Um, obviously all this is public record, so these notes aren't going to go anywhere if you decide to make that decision. Um, but with that, unless you have any questions out the gate, we can kind of start with Commissioner Nold.
Your letter that you dated July thirty-first, did you explain the last sentence in the second paragraph that starts off future land use maps?
The, the future land use map used in the graphics are referred to as the proposed future land use map that the Planning Commission reviewed previously and uses, and uses the new future land use designations approved by the Planning Commission? That sentence?
Yes.
So the map, the underlying map that was used in the conversations with Levy is the current version of the future land use map draft. As well as the, like, designations, you know, not R1, but, um, suburban, residential, rural, residential, those designations.
And what's the date of that, please?
The date of the, the current map.
The map that you took to the Levy Corporation?
Uh, version, is there a date on? If, the version two hasn't been modified probably since June or May.
So is that a direct reflection of what's on the existing master plan that we're operating to today?
No, so it is the future land use plan that you as a group looked at in April and May. And during that time, you would make some decisions on that draft map to change some locations, but also to change some names and descriptions of future land use schedules. If you have questions about what the map is currently in the current future land use map, we have those here as well, you can refer to them.
I, I remember the May meeting, I remember changing the designations. I don't have that good of a remember what we've changed. I think it would be very good if we knew what we had to work with in the April, May. And where we're going today. And then I'm going to add a third one onto that, what it, it currently is on our map as we use the master plan today.
So we do have the, the two thousand and nineteen future land use map and then version two, or no, the zoning map, correct, yeah. So this map twelve here. Is your current two thousand and nineteen future land use map.
So we're, so are we going from that to all these proposals that you have in for us tonight?
The, the underlying map that was used here is the current draft future land use version two that was worked on in May.
You see the underlining, that's different from what the master plan is two thousand and nineteen?
Correct.
Okay. There's a thought process in this that concerns me. And the thought process is, is that we have two thousand and nineteen. We have two thousand and nineteen. We have the one that's been modified in April, May. And now we have a, uh, breakout of what you're proposing or open for discussion is tonight, correct?
Uh, not exactly, the, the way you frame it, it makes it sound like there's three versions, there's only two. You have your two thousand and nineteen map and your current future land use map draft. The current draft that we've been working off of and we had, uh, in the meeting where we had the, we were kind of marking it up. That is, that is the underlying map that was used.
Okay, so we're going from two thousand and nineteen to a combination of April, May in the research you're doing with the property owners.
Correct, that's what's in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So with that, I would say we can start with, we can start with the first few sites. Um, we had also asked Sharp Engineering to look at these notes and assess both current, but then also planned. So not speculative, planned improvements to infrastructure as it relates to water and sewer and whether or not these sites could support, um, kind of the ideas that Levy was putting forward. Uh, so the first site is the West Oakwood Road and West Davison Lake Road. In this area, uh, what Levy's proposing is to go, we had it.
Is it possible to put those up on the screen?
Um, yes, give me.
I mean, I'm okay, I have it here, I just didn't know.
Um, yeah. Well, this is, this is an overhead, uh, give me a second here to. So the, for this site, um, the current designations in this area, in these two areas that they outlined were, um, the ten acre sites, that's what the current draft calls for. Levy was discussing, um, having those sites go to five acre and two and a half acre sites. Um, in reference to Jim Sharp's memo, you know, these sites would be well in septic regardless, but those densities can be supported on that level. We also know that this is a five to ten year site for Levy. So again, here we're looking for, are you comfortable with these changes? Are you not wanting to revert back to what we currently have? Do, would you like it changed and how, or is this something to be discussed at a later date, at a later master plan review?
Um, question that I have is, how many acres in total are we talking here?
That's a great question. Um, I would say for these sites, I, I honestly could not reference it off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Is the question about this site or total?
No, just like that one.
Give me a second, I'll tell you. I don't know it offhand.
Well, he gets that. Thoughts, comments on these sites? Well, is yours, the answer of his.
Is it okay for me to address correctly?
Go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so going, the first proposed one, I didn't see much of an issue, difference in density or difference from lot size, ten down to two point five or five. Um, but through the whole document, everything I look at and think about is roads, travel, people getting to where they need to go. And right now, I don't think we have, we've talked a lot about, a lot of different things with the master plan, but.
Are you, is your comment, as it relates to, like, transportation infrastructure related to this site, or?
In general.
So this.
That comment is, my comment is kind of consistent throughout. It applies to this one a little bit, but more so as the densities get higher, of course.
Well, let's do this one.
We talked about the sewer and water to support, but I think as we go through our survey results. And, um, we look at our master plan that's currently in place from two thousand and nineteen, density is just constantly talked about.
Understood. As it relates to these sites, these designations, do you have any issues with what they, what they proposed?
Well, this one right now, no.
No, okay.
Move on to the next.
Yeah, it's, it's called the Burrows, uh, Material Corp.
Yes.
And it's two hundred and ninety-nine acres.
Gotcha.
And that's.
I'll get pulled up on my phone.
That's for.
Very appreciated.
And the green section?
Yes, that's, that's for both sections.
That's for both sections combined, all the way from Davison Lake Road down to Oakwood Road. What is done in black, outlined in black, that's two hundred and ninety-nine acres.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
So, um, I'm kind of interested, I was like, question about traffic, I think that's a legitimate thing for you to look at, at each of these sites, um.
Just because we got yelled at for it, we figured it's only fair.
If you want, you can come up. Yeah.
I think the impact on the overall road system for each of these sites is something that the Planning Commission should keep in mind. However, um, what I would stress for you to look at is that the roads where they would output into, so in this case, Oakwood and Ludwig and Davison Lake. Um, and would that increase in density have, uh, impact? On those roads that, um, you feel is unacceptable or that couldn't be mitigated? So in this case, with three hundred acres, you gotta take at least fifty acres of that out. And if it's one acre, you know, as you go down, that multiplier for this is not as big. As it would be in some other cases.
Agree.
Um, other things that you could consider, because Mateo gave you the choices of yes, no, change, unchanged, it could be yes. We might look at this type of density if there were road improvements or there was additions to the transportation network that we wanted. Um, or if you were, had particular, um, questions about whether there are wetlands or woodlands or natural features on those. Likely not in this case because it's been mined, um, that then, um, that those be preserved. Those are all things that you could say in that maybe category.
I'm not in favor of this, I, I'm not in favor of supporting this. Um, I think it needs to be addressed at a later date, at the next time we go around with the master plan. And the reason is, is that I don't feel that we need to dedicate that property right now in the future land use map for this type of usage. When it's already on the books for five to ten years down the road, that we could leave it alone. We could see how the area develops because we have a tremendous, you're going to hear this story on many of these, but see how this area develops. So when we get to the next five years down, the next master plan, then we can address it and move it from where it is today to what we want to possibly move it to down the road. And what you're suggesting is go from, uh, ten acre land lots, the Hunt, Hunt Country Estates, and move it to a two point five acre or five acre. And I think you just, we just need to leave it alone, that's.
No, I appreciate the feedback, is that, is that the consensus of the Planning Commission? That this is an area to be dealt with and another review and that for now it stays as ten acres?
I would agree with that.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm open. But if we're going to consider it today, I think that lower right portion of Hunt Country, which is.
Yeah.
So to me, you don't want to have, uh, a change to ten, from ten to five and two point five and leave that at ten. And that, I don't know how big it is, but.
Sure.
Size per second, so you want to be contiguous if you can, so you would want to change that to probably two point five, if you agree with two point five?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, question. Is that not private recreation conserv station, that, this property right here?
I believe the, the blue is the, is the insti, blue is the institutional.
What?
This area right here.
It's ten acre.
That's ten.
So I think it's duly noted, but I think this is a next time round, that for right now, those areas would remain Hunt Country.
I don't have any objections leaving Hunt Country for now.
Okay. So then the next site is Hummer Lake Road and East Davison Lake Road. This one, so again, based off of the current draft, um, and upon review with, uh, the Levis, there was a Levy Corporation, that there were no changes that they were proposing to this. You have your light industrial, you have north of that is one acre and north of that is five acres. And that's been on the map since we've been working on it. The next site is Hummer Lake Road, uh, and West Oakwood Road. So here, the big change was, we had discussed in this area, originally, the, the larger purple area that's been defined as Midwest Industrial. Uh, we had that as light industrial. Uh, Levy had expressed an interest in allowing, uh, more intense industrial uses on those sites. Um, and that actually adjacent to it, the other box that says no change in it, we had discussed that being light industrial at one point in time. However, Levy owning the site, knowing the topography, knowing kind of their plans for it, had indicated that the, the soils and the topography in that area would be very difficult to support industrial. And so they had proposed that that area would actually be a five acre lot residential development because once you get done with the site, that's kind of the mess, the, you know, the best that you could do with it. Um, based on their knowledge and understanding of the site. So here the big ones are again, is that the, the large purple area was light industrial, now it's a heavier industrial. Um, but that we have the, next to it, the five acre sites, uh, to the west. And so again, the, I'm sorry, and this one is, this one has a ten to twenty year timeline on it.
This has a ten to twenty year timeline on it. I went back to Mr. Sharp's reports and I drew some conclusions from those that this will, will be wells and M twenty-four could handle the hundred REUs. But there is not a sewer line up to that point yet. Mr. Sharp, could you talk about that a little bit?
Um, Mr. Nold specifically to the sewer line?
Yes, to the sewer.
I, I'm interested in this area right here. And we have Hummer Lake Road. Coming across, I don't see the rest of the map.
It's M twenty-four.
That's, yeah, it's M twenty-four.
I understand that's twenty-four. Where are we stopping with the current work on the sewer line on twenty-four?
Current sewer ends a mile south down at Dunlap Road. Yep, down about where the, down about where the cursor is, yeah.
Now, to expand the sewer lineup to that location to accommodate that in the next ten to twenty years, is that on our master plan for sewer expansion?
So when we designed the sewer that is currently going in, we did do a master plan of the entire, we're calling it the North Sanitary Sewer District. So the pipe that we're putting in now would be able to accommodate development up in that area. Is it on the township's plan? I don't believe that the township is looking to expand. Um, similar to the project that's going in now, that's been, uh, being funded through a special assessment district. So it is possible that maybe the, um, that the landowners i- in the purple area there, that they want to e- expand and do some industrial area up there. And then they get together and say, well, we're, we're, we are willing to flip the bill for a special assessment to extend that sewer up there, in which case we would have capacity in there. I do not believe it's, you know, on the township books to expand it right now, but that's not to say that it couldn't happen if, uh, some other funding came forward.
Planning Commission, I'm on the sewer, water sewer, so I knew some of these answers, but I wanted everybody to understand that. My concern is, is that this is ten to twenty years out. And if we were to work on those areas like we had the success on the lower twenty-four sewer line that we're working on right now, that would work well. But that's down the road, uh, as far as, is that work being accomplished? So if we were to change this now, I'm only talking about the purple, which is the Midwest Industrial and Warehousing. What would we gain by changing that now, knowing that we don't have the sewer up there, we don't have plans for the sewers up there? We have to wo- work with an SAD or some other funding. How would that play into this, this, this topic tonight?
From a utility, you know, expanding the sewer perspective, um, again, it would take a landowner to want to expand up there. If you did some rezoning, and I'm gonna defer back to Mateo, though you're planner here. But, you know, by doing that, that may allow some additional uses that may entice a developer or somebody to come in and potentially invest in the community to expand that sewer up there.
So we're writing, we're, I'm sorry.
No, you're talking sewer, I'm, I want to talk the land use.
Well, I, it's all related, so we're looking at ten, the next ten to twenty years to change this. With the possibility of laying groundwork to put the sewer up there to, to allow them to build on that property. Do we need to address that today, or can we address that in tomorrow's master plan for future land use?
I would leave that to your planners.
Well, actually, I'm going to ask your engineer a question. So right now, under the current future land use map, if you look at this area, it's planned for light industrial.
And warehousing.
And warehousing.
Yeah.
Um, which, from my understanding, but again, I'm not a professional engineer, those uses can be supported by well in septic. It's just that they take additional land, um, for the well in septic to be there, correct?
Generally, yes, because they're not coming in with a five thousand square foot building, they're coming in with fifty thousand or, you know, larger buildings. So yes, obviously the larger the building, the more people you're going to have, thus your well and your septic are going to have to be larger to support the, the business that is going in, in, in those locations.
So it would be more attractive if there was sewer there for either light industrial uses or research uses or for.
Absolutely.
Warehousing, but both of those uses could be supported on well in septic.
They could, yes, but obviously it's desirable when you have industrial facilities to have them go to a sewer than it is to be putting discharge into the ground.
Well, my question in relationship to that is, my, it was going to be, based on what this is currently zoned, and your best guess, I guess. Would we have in the future enough REUs to then do that in a greater density use?
Yes.
For that area, we would.
Yes, we have planned the north, the sewer that's currently being.
You're going at the north.
Up to Dunlap, correct. And that extends all the way up to Davison Lake Road, it might be a twenty-five, fifty-year plan, we don't know. But when we sized the sewer, we did account for a use, a use similar to this to connect to that sewer at some point in the future.
That would include water.
That does not include water at this point, that is strictly for the sewer.
Because right now, to do industrial and warehousing type development, make large buildings, generally you need water. Because those buildings become suppressed buildings.
Correct.
They need protection. And they, you can't normally build a large component building without those elements. So if you're saying these are way out down the road, then I would think this use is a good use to leave it the way it is, in my opinion. I mean, because it's not going to get developed right away. This would be way down the road in the future, in my opinion.
Yeah, I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go back to a point of Mateo, you could clarify for me, because you made a comment about the ground there wasn't adequate to do.
It, so that's not necessarily for the purple area?
Not for the purple area.
Correct, it's the area, it's the, it's the little green box to the southwest of it that says no change on.
So it has nothing to do with the light industrial?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that because by looking at what we have today, we have it as light industrial, which is purple. And then the future is the Midwest Industrial, which is blue, but this is purple on our.
Well, Midwest Industrial is, I, yeah, so the, the color designations.
Flipped a little bit?
A little bit. But the purple is the, is the more intense industrial on your current draft. And the blue is the lighter.
So, okay, to, and to go with a few of the Commissioners' comments, at this point, why would we change from light industrial to medium based on the sewer comments that we have? Why wouldn't we just leave it the way it is today in the two thousand and nineteen map?
My question would be, if we change it, then it might bring somebody in who then would help to facilitate or cause, uh, the, the building of it to come through. So would actually push it to maybe go through a little bit.
Alright, I, I guess, for a point of clarification and maybe you guys can help with this, because this is just a future land use map, it's not a zoning map. So the zoning would still have to change, it's just what we're thinking, right, out into the future? The zoning would still have to adjust.
Correct.
Into the future, no matter what we do. So I'm not sure it would actually drive anybody.
So yes, it would need to have a rezoning, because if you look at the zoning map, right now it's zoned for residential, um, large, large lots. Um, so it wouldn't have to go through rezoning. One of the things you look at in the rezoning is not only what's on the master plan, but what utilities are available. So if it was master planned for either light and, light industrial or Midwest warehousing, uh, industrial warehousing. And it didn't have the sewer water capacity at that time, the township would have the ability to say no to that rezoning, based on the lack of utilities. Um, but I would agree with Planning Commissioner Ballard that by putting this on the map, what you're saying is we would welcome it. And then that might incentivize somebody to invest in the infrastructure as Mr. Sharp had said.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, so if we don't change it, we're not going to entice people in right now, if we do change it.
I think what, do you want to answer?
I, I gue- I guess the point that I was going to make is, we're talking about either kind of a light industrial or a heavier industrial. And if someone's going to have interest in that space, I don't think it's a stretch in a rezoning or whatever it may be, if they want to go to a heavier industrial, that's not a massive ask. We'd still put it through the same consideration. So I don't think you're, I don't think you're cutting your nose. So I don't think you're, I don't think you're cutting your nose off to spite your face if you left it light industrial.
Yeah.
To Mr. Ballard's point, if you change it, you also are kind of sending a message that you're open to those bigger things.
And if you planned it for the heavier industrial use, then you're ass, you're allowing that scale. You're allowing both light industrial, research and development, and the warehousing, because typically in your zoning categories, those, that Midwest indus, the heavy industrial or the more intense industrial use would also allow for the lighter industrial uses.
I, I wanna acknowledge that this is made, this is planned for the next ten to twenty years. But I also wanna acknowledge that we, the township has been very successful in that M twenty-four sewer expansion that we're going underway right now. With working with the property owners who have come in, they're paying the bill for that on a, uh, SAD, and that's been very successful. It's helped the township out. It's gonna position that property in for development. It will only add to the development of the property we're talking tonight. But my question still is, it's ten to twenty years out.
And.
So that's not a question, it's a statement, and, and I would take it as saying that I think your position here is that this, that this bridge does not need to be crossed today. That you would, that.
Well, okay, let me have a backdoor. If three years from now came up that this property became a topic of discussion, what measures does the township do to make this happen, say, three years from now, four years from now?
To allow a heavier industrial use if it's still future land use as light industrial?
Yes.
I, again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a large ask by the applicant to come in if it's still under the light industrial task for a heavier. We would still consider infrastructure. We would still consider all the elements regardless of whether or not it could be supported, and if there was.
We're not closing the door altogether. We're just not putting it on our future land use map?
Right, well, probably from a technical point of view, depending on what the use is, the township may ask for a future land use map change as part of it, um, just to have all your belts and suspenders. Um, but then, so then that would be an extra step to that process.
I kinda see it as if you, if you change it, they may come, where it might bring in somebody that wouldn't be considering that, you know, in the future. A, a company that has to come in front of the board and then get it potentially changed is, are most, maybe less likely to come to try, try to look at that development specifically, because they have more hurdles to overcome. If it's already zoned heavy industrial, it might also incentivize a company to come in, which then may spur additional utilities that we would be, really, it would be extremely beneficial to bring up through up and, up until all the way up to Oakwood. So, uh, I personally would probably be for that change specifically.
I appreciate the feedback. So I, again, I hear two sets of minds. I, I hear a four and a five years down the road. What's, what it, is there a consensus amongst the commission?
I'd be for it, like Mr. Ballard, but I think, uh, what's everybody else thinking?
Well, I, I believe it's inevitable that something is gonna come to that neighborhood, because it's right on M twenty-four.
Okay.
That's, that's what, when you have industrial type uses or warehousing type uses, you have to have that access. So it's a matter of time when it's gonna change, but I think if you leave it the way it is now, and you look at this for the next master plan update, which I guess I would say five years from now, to review this again and say, where have we gone so far in this time period in five years? I would more likely not try to bring anybody in this neighborhood right away because of the buffer to the west that I wanna see happen yet. And I don't know where that's gonna go, uh, from that acreage. That's four hundred and thirty-four acres there altogether.
Sure.
So that's, that's a pretty big piece of property to come in and do industrial. If they wanna go heavy industrial, then we need buffers to make that happen.
Sure.
And, uh, I think we could leave it the way it is right now and not try and bring or incur anybody to break it, uh, to their advantage to come forward.
No, no, I appreciate that. I mean, so by my count, I've got two fours and two, two five years. So Commissioner Spiz?
I agree with Mr. Berger.
Okay, Commissioner Wolosak?
I like the idea of leaving it the way it is because of the residential to the west, the potential. You do heavy industrial and close to residential.
When you say leaving it the way it is, you're saying not adopting these.
Correct.
Changes, okay. All right, well, that's a solid tie.
Where's Mr. Turner?
I had, I had three. I had update it, keep it, keep it, update it. I'm sorry.
Keep it.
Yes.
I think we've lost.
We're all, we're all.
Yeah, that's, that's what you.
Okay, my apologies.
But we don't wanna be short sightedness to have a petitioner come in and say, in two years from now, after a lot of, all this del- development that's we have at the Drainer Road and other parts of the township matures and say, we wanna put something out there. I think that the township would be open to, to discussing that.
Sure, I'd.
It di- it didn't, i- i- if I heard, if I heard this right, and I did hear rumors that there was a very large company that did wanna put a very large warehouse out there, um, and at the time, unfortunately, it had septic and, you know, it only could handle septic.
Uh, there have been convers-
Pretty recent, and they decided to go someplace else.
Yeah, I believe it's, it's Fannock. Yeah, it's Fannock, and so there, there were conversations, I believe, with limited infrastructure and the township not capturing the Fannock development.
That would've been probably pretty amazing if we would've been fortunate enough to.
Correct, but that was an infrastructure situation, regardless of what your future land used, that that would've been the crux of that conversation. So we've, we have the count to.
Leave it as it is.
Leave it as it is. Okay, and just as a quick side note, again, the area that says no change, we did have as light industrial, per Levy's notes on the site, what it could support, its topography, they were recommending five acre estates. Was there any concerns or comments with that?
What is it today?
It's to, today.
Twenty nineteen.
On twenty nineteen?
It's five acres.
So no change?
Uh, y- yes, there, there were some conversations in the, in May about that potentially being light industrial. I don't expect everyone to remember. I do.
So our draft would go back to.
The five acres, that's it.
I would, I agree with that.
That's fine, okay. Um, okay. Yes.
I mean, it's up to them.
Sorry. Am I allowed to come in?
Just come up to the mic so they pick you up. Thank you. Ruben Maxbauer with the Levy Company, just, just to address, uh, some of the questions that have been raised about, given the timeline, why we would want the change, 'cause what I'm, what I'm hearing from, from this group is an openness to do the change and a question of the timing. At, at least that's the general, uh, impression that I get. And, and I just wanted to share the perspective of the property owner. So for us, uh, and, and for other property owners, we have to plan investments, not unlike the township, very far in advance. So if we get the, the inclination or the impression that there will be a change, we start to budget accordingly. So if we need to bring a pipe a mile up, that's not a, a small investment, and that's not something we can swipe on a credit card. So, so your vision and your willingness to make changes today allow us to plan for the future. That way, if there's a Fannock or what have you, the, the funds have been set aside. Just, just to help, because I agree with you, it's hard to understand, well, if this is twenty years out, why would we have to change now? So I just wanted to bring the perspective of the property owner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so the next site that was discussed is the Dunlap, uh, Hummer Lake Road area. Uh, this one also has a ten to twenty year, uh, development timeline, and, you know, appreciate the context as far as, you know, why those timelines are important to the corporation. Um, with at this site, we had the two and a half acres, um, which no changes were proposed. And then actually, we had, uh, twenty-five thousand square foot lots just north of kind of the curve of Dunlap. Um, and Levy, again citing to, uh, topographic issues with that area and infrastructure, actually recommended going to a one acre there. And then, um, the, the kind of the large, there was a large mix along Dunlap of some one acre and mixed use sites with light industrial behind. Um, Levy's recommendation was that all of that space would be better utilized as light industrial. Uh, again, ten to twenty year timeline on this one, and kind of posed with the same questions, you know, do we, are we in agreement, are we not? Is it five years? Is it change how?
And just wanted to note, on your current future land use map, that area is planned right here, planned for industrial, commercial mixed use. So what they're proposing wouldn't be a change from what your current future land use map is.
Except for the twenty-five thousand to one acre, or is that?
Right, except for the twenty-five thousand to one acre.
Yeah, because currently, currently in your current future land use map, that whole other residential is the twenty-five thousand, uh, square foot lots.
And so what this proposes is to, um.
Like those, it's a decrease in density.
A decrease.
You're doubling the lot size to one acre.
Well, one acre.
Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty is a square.
Right.
Is an acre.
It's decreasing density, just what she said.
Yeah, for both.
I'm for all that. I, I think that's a perfect use for that.
I agree.
Do we have sewer and water available for that area, or are those well and septic?
Uh, Dunlap and Hummer. That one was.
New, new well site.
Yep, new well site.
Hooking into M twenty-four.
But you do have sewer.
No, we have to hook into M twenty-four. We don't have sewer. But, Mr. Sharp, I wanna speak for Mr. Sharp.
This site there's Dunlap and twenty-four.
So the, the sewer that we're installing currently will end, you know, right where the red and the blue come together, right there on M twenty-four. So there will be sewer capacity. Um, there's a, there's a map in your packet. Um, it's not on the, here, I think it's page seventeen of eighteen, that shows that whole north area sanitary sewer district that I was talking about. Um, but anyway, this, this would have, uh, availability to, to sewer. Uh, the water, again, Water Stone is directly to the south of it, so it's right there. Um, but we just don't have the capacity to service that entire area, so a new well site would be required in order to provide water to that area. A small portion of that, um, right along twenty-four is actually in the water district right now. But the, um, but the portions that are out in the, the no change area and the twenty-five thousand to one acre, those are not in the water district right now.
I, I have maybe a question for us as a panel, is maybe, how much do we want water and sewer to be expanded in, um, uh, the pro- a progression? Or, uh, how far do we want it to go? Do we want it to expand? Do we wanna bring w- water and sewer to new locations? And how far do we want it to go?
Mr. Sheriff, I mean, I'm not sure that's the purview of this planning commission, 'cause there's a separate committee that does that, water and sewer, which Commissioner Noel was on.
That's where I'm going with this, is that as we get to these last ones, Mr. Sharp has done an excellent job in his analysis of it. But where I'm looking to, from what we've discussed at our water sewer committee, I'm looking for a study to be done. If we were to approve this, I know it's going up in density, but the other ones are right behind it. What is the impact to our current water sewer? 'Cause we've been throwing that hundred RU out pretty regularly going up twenty-four. But nobody's done a stack up and say, as we go up twenty-four, we're gonna commit at this road, th- this portion so much REUs. The next one, we're gonna have, you know, the water and everything, how that's gonna be all folded into that. And that's, that's my concern. We put the future, uh, what you're talking about, we, we put the future land use map up for all these things, and I do not recognize this is going to a one acre, but it's gonna take capacity up, it's gonna take water and sewer capacity. How does that fit with what we're going, doing up twenty-four, Mr. Sharp?
So again, um, unfortunately, I, it's not on this one, but if you look on that page that shows that north area sanitary sewer district, it does have over on the right-hand side, it does have some, I don't wanna say throw a, throw a dart at it type thing. We did talk to them a little bit, um, when we were doing that, but you can see there's some RU calculations over there, if I'm not, if I'm, is that correct? The north area, doesn't it show those in there?
Yeah, so the, you've got, I mean, kind of this larger, you've got about nine hundred, I wanna say, or is that right?
There's the sewer district.
Do you see that north area sewer district?
Yes.
I believe if you look over to the, onto the right-hand side, you'll see some of the crosshatched areas.
With all due respect, Jim, this, this math is made up with information that you have from the two nineteen master plan.
Not that, but, uh, Mr. Noel, that is not the, the map that I'm discussing. There you go. The one that Mike's looking at right now.
There's a small fine print that I can't read.
Correct, that small fine print that you can't read. If you looked at it on your computer screens, you would see that there are in, an allocated amount of REUs. Again, just bringing that up.
But I understand, there's an allocated amount of REUs.
Yes.
As we go through the future land use map, add to it and take away.
Mm-hmm.
And create more usage on that. Where does that all stand? Particularly if we wanna go up to, uh, Levy's property up north and put in, put in the, uh, light industrial.
Well, I would say in, in general.
Pipe's only so big.
The generality here, for the sewer capacity, we do, we do not have an issue. We have capacity for six point seven three CFS of sewage. We currently run around two CFS with everything that we have in this community right now.
Can you say that again?
Six point seven three, that's our allowable capacity in the sewage that we're dumping into a pipe that goes into Orient Township.
Is that allowable based on the pipe size or allowable based on, uh, GLEWA?
Allowable based on GLEWA. I would assume that the pipe size can handle. I haven't done that whole assessment, but yes. So six point seven three, and right now, we're right around two, two point one, based on what we have in this community right now. So, again, everything would have to be looked at, but you could generally, it almost triple the capacity of the sewer from what we have right now, and you would still be able to service, you know, we still have. The water is the issue that we have with this community right now, and we are currently looking at adding additional well sites around the community, um, to first support the people that we have on the water system, and the people that we have promised can be on the water system. Um, and then also expand the system in the future. Again, I understand Mr. Ballard's question, how far do we wanna go and those type things. I'm just giving you the overview that sewer is really not an issue. It is more on the water side right now with this community.
I'm jumping ahead, but at the close of this meeting tonight, with the decisions and directions that this planning commission has made, I'd like to take that data, compile it and send it to the water sewer or committee, and have them look it over to see if this all, not that I'm doubting Mr. Sharp, but have it go through water sewer, to get a, them on board, what, what, what we're thinking, and maybe some feedback from them, coming back to us what they're thinking.
Okay. Um, and so that exercise can take place. In the meantime, with what you have in front of you and what you know about, what are your thoughts on this area?
Are we back to page five?
We are back to page five.
In my opinion, it's, I'm okay with it, the way it is right now, because it's creating less density.
With the propose, you're, with the proposed changes, you're okay with the proposed change?
With what's on twenty-four, even though they have the office service area right in front of it. I mean, that could possibly change down the road, too. There's a little teeny stretch of green.
Right.
Or whatever that aqua color is or.
But the majority, but the majority being LARD, and then the other two lower density residentials, you're okay with that?
Because usually mixed use with LARD is, is, uh, is less density also.
Okay.
By sewer usage, I guess I'll say it that way. Without water, they can't do it. They need water.
Excuse me.
Okay, Commissioner Ballard?
I'm okay with that one.
Okay, Commissioner Noel? Okay, Commissioner Spiz? Commissioner Bailey? Commissioner Wolosak?
The only issue that I would, I see is the LARD and its proximity to the residential to the south. And that, you know, there'd be buffer zones or be some way of protecting those neighbors, because if a development comes into that LARD area, say the light industrial, trucks coming and going in the morning, I see that being a big problem for those neighbors to the south.
So from a use perspective, keep it, but when the time comes, buffers, mitigation, things of that nature?
Right.
Okay.
And there is a pretty decent buffer now, because you have a lot of gravel truck, traffic on there now.
Okay. We are, we're in the home stretch. Um, so the next site, uh, is the Ray Road Oakwood Boulevard. And the reason, I, I was just trying to use north-south road delineations, and that one strip does go all the way up to Oakwood. Um, but this is, and kind of traverses Hummer Lake there through the middle, middle. Um, but this is the Ray Road site. Um, a lot of activity here, you know, a lot of things to consider. We, again, worked with Levy to kind of develop this, what this area may look like once the site is ready for development. Um, and so, you know, we primarily have commercial services, uh, with a deep frontage along M twenty-four. Uh, behind that, uh, we originally had mixed use and one acre lots. Um, multiple family is what has been proposed. Um, and then kind of wrapping the lake, uh, and again, these are generalities as far as where certain densities go. Um, but from a broad stroke, we would, we were looking to use five acre and two and a half acres. And what's been proposed has been a mix of the nine thousand, um, through twelve thousand, and then the twenty-five thousand and acre sites. Uh, and then north of there, um, leaving it relatively low density with the, um, acreage estates, five acre. And the rural residential, two and a half acre, and then north of Hummer up to Oak, uh, Oakwood would be the ten acres, which is no change. Commissioner Noel?
I don't have a problem with this, except for the nine thousand to twelve thousand square foot lots. I like the smallest to be twenty-five thousand.
I would like what the smallest be acre, but that's me.
That's fine. That's good.
And my, oh, sorry.
I would also like to see if, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chair. Ruben, have come up and talked to that a little bit, please.
What's the question you want me to address? Why we, why we requested this?
Months ago, you did an excellent job at your location explaining what you wanted to do with this piece of property here. Particularly how you're going to use and develop the lake. I'd like you to talk to the, the AE five acres, our, our two point five acres mixed use. Or a mix of nine thousand to twelve thousand. Can you talk to the nine thousand to twelve thousand, possibly touch on the twenty-five thousand square foot lots?
Certainly. So, going back to what we, what we've discussed extensively earlier. The, uh, investment was made in bringing sewer up in this area with the concept that, that we have in front of us here. The reason that, that we were, uh, eager, is probably the wrong word, but that we were happy to invest was because of the development potential of this site. As we envision this site, uh, as you said, Commissioner Noel, we'll, we'll have the lake on site. The concept is around the lake, we'd have larger, single-family developments, and then as we move away from the lake, uh, the density would increase. Uh, so smaller lots further away from the lake, uh, um, but still taking advantage of the property. And given that it's right off of Ray Road, that it has, uh, traffic light at that intersection, that it's adjacent to Meyer, that it's near the school. There's lots of, of things, uh, going in favor of this property in terms of providing some density. So that's why we're, we're proposing this, so we can take advantage of our investment as well as offer home sites, uh, at a site that's really designed for it.
How many acres in estimate is that yellow area?
Oh, oh, oh. That would be, so, so the site itself is just shy of, of fourteen hundred acres. So that yellow area's got to be four hundred-ish. That is, that's a very rough estimate.
You're fine. That's all we're taught. We're, this is future land use.
Exactly.
Uh, five to twenty years out, understand. If you were to, say, stop at one acre or twenty-five thousand square feet. How much does that reduce your properties?
I'd have to run the numbers. I don't know if, and it'd be a meaningful difference.
About half?
At least a half.
Yeah. It, it'd be very meaningful to us. That, that would, that, it would, it would be a meaningful impact to us. That would be problematic for us.
Where would you, where would you suggest drawing the line if a line was drawn between nine K, twelve K, and twenty-five K? Six?
Can you ask the question differently? I, I'm not sure what you're asking.
You, you're proposing a nine thousand square unit lot, a twelve thousand square unit lot, and a twenty-five thousand unit square lot mixture.
Yep.
If you had to take some of that out, the nine or the twelve.
I mean, what ingredient do you want to take out of a pie? Uh, I, I'd take out the larger one and have more of the smaller ones.
I mean, for, just, and I didn't mention it, but just to add context to it, the, the memo references, and I think the goal here is fifteen hundred units.
That's correct.
Across the varying designations.
That's correct.
So, maybe from that perspective, it's if they pull the nine thousand out, you're down to thirteen hundred. I, I know you're not doing the math tonight, but I think.
No, or you make multifamily a little larger?
That would be a possibility, correct.
So we have, we have planning room in this whole scenario.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Burger?
An awkward question.
I'm ready.
You're, you're mining currently.
Yeah.
And you're in this area. What are your expectations of what you have availability for mining in this area yet?
Is the question in terms of how many remaining tons?
Yeah.
It's a good question.
Tonnage works in years.
In theory, you're right. The problem is, the majority of the remaining tonnage is underwater. And I have a very hard time quantifying what's underwater. Uh, as, as you all may know, we take lots of tours of, of kids through Ray Road. And, and we take them out to the dredge and we show them what's going on, and then I always make a point of taking them over to our high wall, which is the, the dry bank. And I, I ask the same question every time, and I say to the kids, what do you see in that, uh, in that cliff face? And it takes a while, but one of the kids will inevitably say, well, the rocks are up top and it's sandy down below. And I said, exactly. We can see that when we're dry mining and we can't see it when we're underwater. So, we know volumetrically how many tons are underwater, we don't know what the. Uh-oh. Oh, we don't know what the reserve really, uh, will yield, so we have, we have guesses, but we don't have accuracy.
Is the question years of operation left at the site?
Well, it's kind of, I was trying to get to where, okay, how many years are we, can we relook at this thing within the next five for another update on the plan? But, I'm, I, I love one acre lots based on the idea that we don't increase water and sewer, but this property is right across from the school. I mean, this, the majority of this yellow piece that he's pointing at, the four hundred approximate acres, we'll call it.
Yep.
That's right across from where the school is now, and that's just a massive asphalt parking lot in that area. So, I mean, I'm not really against a, maybe a twenty-five thousand square foot lot per se yet. But I don't, I would not go any smaller than that. I would take the nines and twelves and everything right out of there. And then I would say proposing it to keep the, uh, the one acre parcels involved in that, too. But I would not be opposed because of what's there now. And then when you get on, actually Oxford Road, you know, the bend is there, and you go on Oxford Road, right across the street, they have large parcels. I mean, there's twenty acre parcels right across the street on Oxford Road on the east side. And you have that big, big berm there now as you drive up Oxford Road, which is on their property that they created to keep that separation there. So, in the future, depending on how the balancing would work on that property. I could see a twenty-five thousand square foot lot on that piece with water and sewer, if the water goes in. They would have to have water to do it. They couldn't put enough, uh, they'd have to keep the one acre parcels to do well and septic private.
Planning commissioners, I, I'd like to suggest that. We leave this alone. This one right here, we have, I, I would suggest that we leave that open for discussion.
Okay.
Don't close the door on that, Ruben, is that fair?
Yep.
You're out five to twenty years?
Right.
So that's not closing you down, but it's, it's, it's more saying, we would like to look at that later on.
Yep.
Would that work for you?
Uh, that, that should work. The, we'll move, uh, west to east. Sorry, I must have broken the microphone. We'll move west to east, so the, the red part, uh, is going to go in first, and then allowing us to do the, uh, to, to what's proposed in orange. With the multifamily would be helpful as well. So, if I understood you correctly, Commissioner Noel, you said red and orange are okay, and then let's talk about yellow.
I would challenge the, the board to consider that.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
It's kind of what I was getting to, but I mean, because of what's going to have to happen with mining operations.
Yep.
And when that big goddamn sixteen cubic thing goes down and grabs all that soil and sucks it back up in about ninety seconds. Uh, you guys don't know until you do it.
You got it.
That's why I was just trying to get an idea, because I know you do a lot of boring.
Yes, we do a lot. We do a lot.
So, I think in the future, it could be re-analyzed again to see what's the best route to really take, and it's probably five years down the road again.
And part of the strategy is making sure we're thoughtful in terms of what, what virgin ground we leave. We can mine down, but we want to stay above the water table, and we need to know what future development looks like as we make those decisions.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Sharp had his hand up. Is there anything you'd like to add? I don't want to close you out. I wouldn't suggest to close you out.
I'm a visual guy. I like, I'm just going to give you for, um, for the waterstone development, this would be similar to that. Hometown Village, seventy-two hundred square foot lots. That's about what that is. Westlake, those are like, those are like nine thousand square foot lots over there. Um, Gulf Highlands, which is up in the, the northern part, those are like fifteen thousand square foot lots up there. So just to kind of put things into perspective, as to what you're looking at here, nine thousand sounds really tiny, but you know, there's, a lot of times, there's a market. For those smaller homes like Hometown Village there along, you know, along Seymour Lake Road. So, again, leaving it open or however you want to do it, that's fine.
Proposing the planning commission close that door.
Hmm, nope. Just trying to put it into perspective, you know, when you're talking, start talking twenty-five thousand, that's. Um, you know, that's over half acre lots there, which, you know, those are nice sized lots. So to do all of that, to have a nice mix, the way that waterstone was done. Um, I, I think it offers a lot of different, you have condos, you have, you know, different price ranges for things. Uh, you have the lake, you have a lot going on there, so, and they have shown that in the past, you know, they have planned that out very well. Uh, somebody that's working with Ruben was a big player in the development of that, and I don't know how long Mr. Zanati will still be around, as long as he can be. Because he loves doing it, but, again, just trying to put it into perspective of the lot sizes that you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I can appreciate that, and, and one of the reasons I'm willing to keep this open is because I believe we need more of those condo sites that we have in the waterstone, because. Those goes up, goes up, when those go up for sale, they're quick, they're gone. I mean, everybody I talk to wants those. But there's not enough of them for sale here in Oxford, even in the area. So, if that, some of those get put into that area, I would support that, and I thought.
And I think, if I can just add to that, one of the.
The golf course, too, same thing.
If I can add to that, I think those condos are desirable because of the amount of green space around them.
Yeah.
And the access to trails.
So, um.
Safety path.
Mr. Chair, if I could make a suggestion on, maybe one of the things that we look at and continue to discuss. Um, is some overall number of units for this area in general. Um, so you limit to, if they said fifteen hundred units. Um, to say, in this overall area, there will only be fifteen hundred units, and then you leave that single-family area open. Um, in terms of, say that it could be attached or detached, single-family residential of a variety of sizes. That leaves things open for the future. You could maybe, five years from now, get a much more specific plan on that. In terms of having open space and preserving open spaces, because the smaller the lots that you have, and the more attached units you have, the more. If you have a density, a number of units limitation, the more opportunities you have to create that open space. Um, and to, whatever a unit backs up on open space, whether it's an atta, whether it's attached, single-family or detached, single-family. The value of those lots is greater. Um, and so, making sure that you create that opportunity there, I think, would be important. Um, so something to consider as we go forward. But as Mateo and I are writing this, would you say it's fair to say in the yellow area that, that can be attached to single-family? Attached, single-family and detached, single-family area lots, units? Or is it just single-family detached units that you want there at this point to be called out?
I'd be open for both.
I'd be open to both.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then, okay.
So is that going to be determined by size then again?
Well, I think, I think if we use this overall, i- if everybody's comfortable, comfortable with fifteen hundred units.
I wrote fourteen hundred, but that's because I heard that from Ruben.
You just can't leave it.
Yeah. So, and, and that's something, and we can go back, um, we did a build-out analysis.
Yeah.
For this area, and we can go back to these specific lots and look at them.
Okay.
And see, you know, how much of an increase in the number of units that is.
Yeah.
That would probably be interesting, you would continue to have this conversation, but just in general with the, before, before we fi- finalize the master plan. But just in general for the future land use, that it's single-family attached and detached.
I wouldn't want to be, it's not the term short-sightedness, but I wouldn't be, want to be short-sightedness to say that. Levy could come in and say, we want to ex, you took my picture down. We want to expand that multifamily. A little bit. Ish. So if you put a number on that, the multifamily is going to take part of that number and leave this to larger lots.
Good, yeah.
It could. It's, it's a possibility.
The master plan's supposed to be a guide. It's not, it's not absolutely set in stone, it's not like zoning, so.
So, can I ask a question? The, um, that orange area, the, uh, multifamily area that he was just pointing to, that could be expanded potentially?
Mm-hmm.
Um, if a preliminary site plan was brought in front of the planning commission to look at. Could that, what's the minimum lot size that could be based on right now?
It's more of a, it's more of a density per acre.
Yeah.
I don't have the density confirmed, but I want to say.
So a contemporary plan that comes in front of us now sometimes, it's usually based on six thousand square feet, right? Or residential?
In, in a dense, resident, single-family housing, yes, six thousand square foot lots.
I.
But we're obviously trying to get away from that, right?
I honestly, for anything in this area, I would say is probably going to come in as a residential PUD or a mixed-use PUD. Because of the topography changes, because they're creating a lake, because of, um, you know, there. Would probably be some through streets that would come through. Um, so it wouldn't be, it, it likely wouldn't be a, a typical site plan. Um, also then, you know, if you look at how this is zoned right now, it's all zoned for, um, two point five acre lots. Or.
Megan, I think an example would be when you look at Glasby Street and Drainer Road where they're doing Tullamore North. That's a mixed-use classification, you know, they got duplex units going in there, you could have townhouses, you could have single-family homes around the lakefront. There's a, it would be a similarity of something like that, in my opinion.
So, so what would happen is, we would have this general and the master plan for, you know, kind of these blurbs of where it is, and this would likely be a special area plan. So we could put some more things in to that bubble diagram in terms of what your vision is for this area. Um, and then they would come in for a rezoning or a planning unit development in order to implement what they wanted to develop. And that would need to match the master plan, but it also would need to have, um, the infrastructure in terms of. Water, sewer, and roads in order to support it.
Okay. I just find that when we are sitting here, and we get presented with the temporary plan, it has two hundred locations or two hundred spots, six thousand square feet. We're sitting here going, okay, well, now they're bringing a hundred and ninety to us in a PUD, and we think it's better. It feels better, but the community is out here telling us, no, it's not, and they don't want that high a density, right?
I think, Sue, I think what the disconnect is and what can happen is that there's a density in terms of number of units per acre. So how many units can actually go on a site? So how many potatoes can go in the bag? Um, and the general public doesn't understand, it's about, when you're talking about density, it's about how many potatoes are in the bag. What they understand is the individual home sites and how big they are and what that looks like, so the individual potatoes. And everybody's in favor of a bigger potato or a bigger lot. Um, but when you're looking at developing a site, and waterstone is a great example. If you look at that, you know, if you look at it in an aerial right now, you can see all that open space that's there. Well. You know, you could have that same number of units with bigger lots, with a lot less open space and not have the golf course. So, if you're thinking, I, I'm going to challenge you to think a little differently, and think about what type and quality of development that you want. And we should describe that here in the master plan. And then, when people bring it in, that's one of the things that you look at when they bring a residential PUD. Or a PUD, or even something to rezone. Does that fit that vision? If you're only thinking about the individual lot, and that I'm uncomfortable with a twenty-five thousand square foot lot. Um, or nine thousand square foot lot, when I look at that lot in and of itself, I, I can understand. I, I can understand, I can understand that from an individual's point of view, but when these developments come in, it's the overall and how they work together with the open space and the roads. And you are in a place where you can set the stage and make some demands on that, because each one of these big sites that we're talking about has developed cha- developmental challenges, they're not easy sites. And so they're going to be asking for, they're going to be, they're, they're probably going to ask, it's not going to be a cookie cutter site, because they, they can't do it based on what it is. Um, and if you look at any site that's been redeveloped from a gravel pit, you'll see that there's a lot of open space and there's been challenges. And usually, something this big that's spun by one developer, um, or one landowner, has a whole series of different types of products of residential, in order for them to have things that sell at different stages in the market. Because they're looking at a development that's going to stretch fifteen years, typically of something of this size, that it wouldn't be sold out. And so if you think about how the market changes for housing, think about the last fifteen years of the housing market, um, where, where do you want, you know, how do you want to, what quality of development do you want to set up?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
You baited the hook. Do you have any examples of these visions in other master plans that you've developed for other communities that we could apply that here?
So specifically here, and specifically to this site, you said you need east-west roads, right, and north-south roads. You've also said you need trails, um, in terms of connections. You've also had it articulated to you strongly that the public wants to see as many natural features preserved as possible or created as possible. So those are things that you could say for this area that they are priorities. Um, and that, and if you look at Waterstone, which had a plan before, you, you know, Waterstone has a street, that has Market Street, that connects from one area to the other, right? And that's a well-used road. That, that didn't exist until that was there. You can, you can put that down as, now, is it going to be placed in the exact location that you have in this master plan? Likely not. There's lots of things, as all the engineers in the room can tell you, that you don't know until you're out there, um, or you have a survey. Um, but those are things that you can mark down. So, and those are things that have been put in the past. However, this is your decision. These are things that we want to hear from you that are the priorities. I've just listed off the ones that I've heard.
Planning commissioners, I'd said, I would challenge you to request that, to see if we could get that put in the master plan. Uh, the polls didn't vote me in, so I won't be here for the, after November. So I would challenge the planning commission to take a careful look at these, to use Megan and her expertise to put things in writing. So we have some, we have some developments in this community that there were supposed to be east-west roads that didn't get complete. And so what I would challenge the planning commission to do is to take that block of land and designate it to have those east and west roads, or north and south roads. So no matter who owns it, or who, what changes hands, that those roads and those things that are important to the planning commission are actually implemented in that develop.
And based on what I just threw out there, we can take our best shot and come back to you with something to react to.
Yeah, please.
Alright.
Would this be designated to partials, or would this be in general for new developments? Would this be for developments over fourteen hundred homes? How would, wh- what's the breakpoint?
Um, so when I was speaking, I was speaking about perhaps this particular site, and having, uh, a, a small area plan that goes into, these are where roads should be, these are where pathways should be, these are goals in terms of preservation of natural features, where possible, um, things like that. There are a number of things that are in other plans that could be put on that map. So it's smack dab obvious to somebody seven, ten years from now, because I'm not going to bank on that I'm still your planner. I think my husband would be disappointed, um, and that all of you would still be at this table as well. Um, so we really, my experience is, unless it's on a map, um, then you're, then planning commissioners, or maybe even, uh, don't necessarily see it, if it's buried in the text. But if it's in a graphic form, it's much easier for it to happen in the future.
The larger the map, the better.
Yeah, the larger the map, the better.
Are we going back to the big posters again?
What, what would we do without your commissioners, Spiz?
Yeah. So I was talking about this in general, and I think we, what we've heard from you in particular, uh, this site in particular, what we've heard from you in general, and will be in the master plan draft that we will get to you, is discussions on traffic and how it's a problem. Discussions on preservation of natural features and how that is a priority. Discussions on how, um, you want to diversify the commercial and the businesses who are here, and including a desire for medical, um, to be here. Those are all th- big things that have come out and that are in drafts that are in process.
Yep.
Alright, Mateo, next one.
Okay. So, last but not least, is the, Commissioner Noel, I wasn't even done scrolling.
Where have we left this? Where has this left off? What's the, what's the bottom line here?
Go for it, boss.
We're going to do a concept plan and bring that back to you your next meeting.
So as far as-
That's just for the yellow area, or the whole thing?
For the whole thing, and for the yellow area, what we're saying is that in the yellow area, it could, it's going to be single-family residential, and that it's, you know, it could be, should be determined, will be, you know, will be determined what that is.
Fair, okay. Yep. I agree with that.
Okay. Here I go. Oh, oh man, do you have a question, Commissioner Noel? Okay. Alright, so last but not least is the Seymour Lake, uh, Granger Road site, which is, we're kind of on the southern end of it here, but basically across the street. Uh, so the development timeframe with this one is probably the most present of all of them, uh, that sites one to five years. Um, and here we had, we had one acre sites, uh, that there's a proposal to go down to the nine to twelve K sites. Uh, we had one acre sites with a proposal to go down to twenty-five K sites, uh, and then we had five acre sites kind of to the far west of it that would be going down to one acre. So you guys know the exercise at this point, what are your thoughts?
Is it the total piece of property that's approximately three hundred acres? I mean, all three of those parcels together?
Three thirty.
About three thirty, okay, three hundred thirty. And so if they went from the five acre to one acre, that's what the one, that's about maybe one half, not, well, it's at least a third anyway or more. I'm not, I'm a, I'm on, okay with that for sure, because of what's kind of adjacent to it right now, you know, surrounding that portion of land. And then, uh, due north of there, which would be right off of, uh, well, that'd be Granger Road. It, it's called Granger Road now, but it'd be where Market Street kind of would keep going if it did. They're saying they would like nine, nine thousand to twelve thousand. I guess because they're considering themselves adjacent to what's already there at Woodside. Uh, you know, when, when you look at Boulder Point, probably across the street, because that's Dunlap Road, right across the street.
Correct. That northern corner is Dunlap and Granger.
I'm certainly not opposed to, I guess I would call it vanilla, or whatever color you're trying to call it. The, uh, the S R R, one acre to S R twenty-five thousand. See, a person could come in with a PUD on all of this, and create open space and do some nice development too, and combine it all. So if we kept, if we kept the, uh, lighter colored piece and the yellowy, or, I guess it's orange, isn't it? To the left, as larger portions, and then combined it all as a density of a, a mixed-use plan, then I wouldn't be opposed to doing the smaller lots up on the north end.
So in general, kind of over an average of how many units would go into that site, you don't have any problem with this?
No, because it would, but it would, it would average out, it would, it would still control density. So as an average, I'm not opposed, because we got almost two-thirds of it all, it's fairly large parcel now. And then just by adding a couple more small pieces off that small sector up there on the north end of this piece, it still keeps density down.
Okay.
So you're looking at, I don't even know if we got enough water for all this. That's another, we do-
Majority of the properties are in the water, and there's six hundred RIUs been allocated for this area.
So we're talking one REU for single family, but when you go into some multiple stuff, it changes a little bit less than that, so.
That's again, that's Mr. Sharp's forte.
Well, no, we're just talking down the road, because this is a five-year plan we're looking at right now. This is for five years.
Well, this, this site has a timeline of, what, what was proposed is one to five years potentially, so this, this is the soonest of all of them.
Because it could come in right, it could come in tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to this portion, right. I'm not opposed to what you proj- projected for this.
Okay. Commissioner Noel, do you have a question?
The yellow-yellow, I'd like to see it twenty-five thousand square foot.
The northern area?
Yeah, and then the, uh, SSR one, the acre to two and a half, I'm okay with that. And then the, uh, eighty-five acres to SSR one acre, um, I'd like to see that go down to two and a half acres, not quite to one acre.
So two and a half acres, uh, twenty-five thousand up in the north, and then the middle portion you're okay with, just to be clear, I, I don't know if you meant it, but you said two and a half acres, you meant twenty-five K?
Yes, twenty-five K.
Okay.
On the map, it shows right this minute that there's like water, body of water on a good portion of that. Does it get pumped out?
No.
So that, that lake remains?
They would develop around.
Yeah, so yeah, the, I, I didn't-
I mean, there's a lot of lake there, I mean, so it could be-
There aren't going to be as many lots in that vanilla-colored area because of the lakes.
It, because if you look right here, it looks as though the lake kind of comes out, almost like, almost like this.
You gotta look at usable land.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't, but I'm looking on the overhead map.
Commissioner Spiz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I agree partially with, uh, Commissioner Noel about the yellow being twenty-five K, but I'd also be open to it to be a multifamily up there at that corner, because you have the power station at the corner across the street and the other corner. So, and I know we need more multifamily in this area, that we don't not have enough, or the condos, you know, I'm all, you'll continue to hear me say that and everything I see.
Could it be divided?
I mean, it, yes, I mean, it could be-
I don't know how big that piece of property is. How many acres?
I'd say twenty percent of three hundred and thirty, so sixty, seventy acres roughly.
That's a good idea. Multifamily is a good idea.
In that corner.
Multifamilies.
I'd be, I'd be open for that discussion, or, what Commissioner Noel said, say it up, make it all twenty-five K.
So maybe we, maybe it gets split between the two. It's twenty-five K on one and it's multifamily on the other.
Or we use Megan's, uh, idea that so many ho- so many residents in that, and let the property owner divide it up as they see fit.
You could also, in these special area plans, create, um, uh, create a separate land, uh, separate future land use that's just attached, a- attached, single-family residential. Um, I don't know if you necessarily wanted to, you know, your multifamily would allow three to four-story apartment-style buildings. I think what you're talking about in terms of what's, um, been selling very quickly here in the township, is attached, single-family, um, and especially with the residential area in that, um-
That's what I mean, yes. I don't want a three-story building.
Yeah, okay, and then the other thing to note there, I think most of the planning commission is aware of it, but Dunlap in that area is proposed to be paved, um, and to loop into the other paved parts, so that will happen in the next couple of years. Yeah.
I don't believe it's proposed anymore, I believe it's going to happen.
Yeah, it's scheduled. Yeah.
You know, I'll throw something else, just to make the stew more interesting. If you'd come down here and draw a line a little farther down here, then it might make that yellow piece want to be larger, but then you could put a little bit more multifamily down there if, if so desired.
Single story.
Single story.
Yes.
Attached residential product.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the only problem that you-
That'd be a nice thoroughfare with Market Street and Dunlap paved, and possibility a little bit more to the-
It's going to be hitting right into the lake, where that would shoot right, straight across, you just put a diving, you just put a diving board, because-
I, I don't have it on my drawing. It's not a huge-
Again, these, these are, these are generalities.
Yeah.
Stand to be corrected, you're right. That is shaded. Well, I, Mr. Lovey, work on it.
Alright, so the, it looks like that we, there's some adjustments to be made in the northern portion of it, that the central portion, the, the twenty-five K, the site called for twenty-five K is, is okay as proposed, and that the, the pieces to the west where we're looking at one acre is okay to be proposed.
So, okay, so we, maybe restate, what were you guys saying for the, for the top section again?
That we would, that the nine to twelve would go away, but that the area would be, almost call it split for now between a multifamily product and a twenty-five K lot product.
Attached, single-family residential.
Attached, yes, there you go, for the record.
But see, if someone came in with, with all of this property, all three hundred and thirty acres, and, and then take out the lake and what's usable land, and you kept those nine to twelves in there, and then you wanted to have townhouses combined with some blend of detached, single-family homes around the lakefront, and some other uses in there, you're not creating any more density. You're going to have open space, and, and you're not creating any more density, so I wasn't opposed with what was originally proposed as the nine and twelves for that portion to get the density value.
I'm okay with it.
Then the developer looks at it, like, now I got some density value. I do my townhouses, or my detached duplexes, or whatever I want to put in there, and I do some detached, single-family homes under a multiple factor, you know, under, under this property, and I have a nice development, and we have water and sewer available for it, and the road's going to be paved. So to me, I think it's, the way it sits right now, because you just told me this could be very future-used piece of property, I guess. That's what I'm hearing. I don't know this, because I don't sit on any meetings or anything, but other than what I'm just listening to tonight. So I'm not really opposed with what you presented, but some other people here are, so what are you going to bring back to us?
I think what we can do is bring back the same as the last one, we discussed, a concept plan that shows these in general, um, and also kind of what uses could be, and then on this particular one, what I'm hearing is that there's a desire to have that attached, single-family residential, um, but then also to look at the lake as an asset, um-
But you know, like Mr. Spiz said earlier too, you got the power plant right across the street on Granger Road to the north.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's not a real pleasant thing to drive home and look at too every night, so that little portion of property right there, if you did the right kind of development and put the buffers in there, then you can have that multiple used property that he's talking about, single-family height, because that's what he mentioned. I wouldn't be opposed to leaving it the way it is, so you're going to bring something back with a plan.
I am. The guy who sits in the cube next to me, he's got skills.
Okay.
We're going to make his, him work next week. No, he's on the other side. This is our landscape architect.
No, I don't want you to talk about me, so.
Well, I know that your guidance comes from this group.
Yes.
This is, we're the one that's supposed to provide what we think should be there, and you're going to put the guidance together to do it.
Yes.
So I, I get that, okay. That's the one thing I do understand. We're the, we're the people telling you what we think we want.
And we're here to listen and then to translate into paper.
This is a new meeting for me tonight, so I'm enjoying it.
Unless you had any other questions or instructions for us, I think we-
Just, again, roads, you know, Market Street's going to get a tremendous amount of pressure from a development like this. Dunlap gets paved, that's fantastic. Um, I just can't say that enough. You know, it's, I hear across the community, everywhere I see it, you know, we s- we see the accidents that have happened in the, in the areas of Drainer and Twenty-four and, um, every, uh, I'm, I'm repeating myself now, so I'll stop.
No, that's okay, yeah.
So, thank you. I mean, it's a lot to chew on, it's a lot to go through, um, you know, we realized seeing this over that it was a tall order, but all this feedback's been great. Truly, we appreciate it, so thank you. If you guys don't have any other questions, can move on. If you guys don't have any other questions, can move on.
I'm good. Anybody else?
Alright, moving on to number twelve, communication or committee reports. Economic Development Committee?
Nothing to report.
Okay, ordinance review. Uh, Mr. Turner is not here this evening.
We have our next meeting scheduled for eight-twenty-two, and we have our packets out.
Yep. Okay. Uh, thirteen, planning engineer reports, uh, you guys have anything else you wanna add?
It's just been busy, I mean, we've been, we've had a lot of pre-apps, uh, my understanding is we had a preliminary site plan dropped off today for some industrial use, so we'll get our arms wrapped around that, but I would guess you guys will probably see that in the next four to six weeks, but, uh, no, things have been busy, a lot of buzzing.
Thank you. Sir?
Should have a re- excuse me, should have a report in your packet, just an update on current projects, both private and municipal projects. If there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer those.
I didn't have any questions, anybody?
No?
No?
Alright, I know about you guys, but, or, uh, or Megan, but Mateo and I will still be here five to seven years, so we'll, we'll, we'll remember all this stuff, don't worry.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Sharp, he put a lot of work into t- tonight with the water and sewer, and how that all is, is going, and even in attending the meeting tonight, where that was-
Good to see his face.
Yes, thank you.
Good to be here.
Wow.
Okay, if we have nothing else, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion, we adjourn at, uh, eight-thirty-two.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion second, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.